Ladies and gentlemen, this is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Sunderland Board of Selectmen. I appreciate everybody watching. You can call us at 7:04. Tonight, we're going to get in under the wire at the end of the month, sewer application permit review. We're going to talk with the Brandt's Bank, a new superintendent, the frontier regional schools, about capital and capital planning, our fire chief about regional EMS, discuss staffing schedules, and then discuss treasurer collector candidate. We might even have a candidate. So, we're going to talk about that. Couple of pieces of old business, and then we'll be adjourning in a regular session. No open, no executive sessions tonight at all, okay? So, first order of business tonight in front of us as sewer commissioners, and we still have to get those hats made up. We have a sewer application for 210 North Main Street. And over the course of the last, oh, month essentially, there's been month and a half, you know, bureaucracy and excellence, not necessarily the right, you know, they don't go together. That said, Jim Williams bringing forward a utility tie to our infrastructure on North Main Street. That is 210 North Main. We having a butter in the crowd, a concern to butter. And the application process and our policies have pushed us to this final meeting. There are a couple of pieces that are application specific and a couple of pieces that were policy specific, including site visit with the super operator. We contract our operator out with the highway department, even though we're on this correct side of the road. What we have in front of us right now is what we think are the final pieces. We left last time before our last meeting, it was to meet onsite with Rich Brendan.
I had done that before, just in happy results in the right.
Exactly. So, we'll go over the first part, that is the actual application, some of the logistics associated with that, some of the correspondence from the powers that be. And then, we're actually going to continue our conversation about the sewer policy, how we actually go about it, because there's an application process the general public goes through, and there's the approval process that the sewer commissioners go through. So, in front of us, what we have is a new house for Mel, someone who's nodding. John and Mel's house, as it says right here. It is direct tie. It ties into the northern section of North Main Street. It ties in adjacent North Main Street and North Silver. And we have, what, a 61A parcel behind that, and we have a butter to the north of that and to the south of that. We have correspondence in front of us from the highway superintendent as well as from the operator. Now, it's a 25,000 square foot house with nine bathrooms? No? Oh, okay.
Half inch water.
Half inch, exactly. How'd you like to go about describing it for us, Jim?
It's a 1,600 length, 1,600 square feet of living space with a garage attached. Two bathrooms, laundry standard. Nothing unusual about the house.
Elevations are all good, no forced mains.
The house is going to be raised to get out of the groundwater level, which was at four feet down from the top of the grade. So, that we'll be bringing some fill in.
And you've talked to the building commissioner about the fill, about bringing the fill in?
So, house in footprint, Tommy, can you take a look at that part? And I'll pass over to David. We've got one map in front of us. We have a locust right in front of us. Of course, sewer commission, as sewer users, you pay flat fee. We don't meter the discharge. And it's, the permit is largely driven by the number of appliances. So, sinks, bathrooms, laundry, et cetera, and those are all spelled out right here. The correspondence from Rich Brendan was about the tie, Jim, about the elevation?
The invert elevation and the location within the structure where he wants the pipe. It's just shown on the drawing.
Kind of keep it above the base well?
It's above the base, yes. Drop into the trench.
Okay. Did he give a projection on how far in, to keep it on the shoulder?
We, oh yes, about 18 inches, 16 to 18 inches. Where's that low? Onsite, whenever they require one, we're doing it.
Yeah.
We'll be doing it.
Okay.
We'll be identifying their expertise.
And you talked with George, and there's no road cutting?
No.
Happens to be on the right side. You chose wisely. Okay. Questions of the board, commissioners?
Okay, so you're going to go with Schedule 40 PVC? PVC, okay. And you're going to have the quarter inch per foot pitch? And that's, you're going to be your responsibility anyways, so.
Yeah, we have some problem with our houses off down Brock. Guys don't care.
Well, we do care.
What's the zoning district there? What's the zoning district right there?
It's the village residential.
Is it village residential? Okay.
My biggest thing is the pitch and make sure that you're above the, that you come in, yeah, that you come into the manhole, and that's why you can't, and I don't think you can have too much pitch, so.
No, you're right.
Pretty straightforward.
In cases where there's too much, that's a problem, but that's extreme.
You could. And you're not going across the road, you're going to tie into the manhole just before.
Which is on, there's a manhole in the center of the street.
I saw that.
There's also one just adjacent, just east of that. Where the, where the, the northern section of the sewer heads north from that, on the edge of the road.
So, it comes down on the east side?
Comes down on the east side, and then turns right there into the center of the street, and then heads south.
Nice.
So, I mean, otherwise we'd be digging into the middle of the street or into the sideline, side. But in either case, Rich felt really comfortable about being in the structure.
Super. It's no directional boring, no road cutting, we're all good.
Right.
Nice. Questions or concerns of the butters?
The only, the only question I have is if butters being notified. I mean, this is, by right, he has the right to put a building. The sewer connection should have nothing to do with the butters, because it's up to the sewer capacity and where it's going to hitch into the town sewer line. And, you know, it's more expensive for him to notify the butters and everything else. And with the stretch building code, you know, these things build up and build up and build up. So, at some point, it's going to be unaffordable for people to build houses in town. You know, every little bit adds up.
Sure.
And, you know, I think the policy should be revised somehow.
Point well taken, but I would say that a year and a half ago, we had 200-plus feet of forced main that went across people's lawns.
That's a different situation. That's a totally different situation. That's a, that's a right of way issue for the landowners concerned.
Sure. I understand what you're saying, Bruce, but as in a butter, right? You still had that pipe going across adjacent your property. That's an express concern.
Only if the butters grant a right of way.
Sure.
Otherwise, it's a dead issue.
So, as a policy goes, I would, I would suggest that we keep the policy there, only in that if there's a future board that says, Jesus, no notice to the butters required, go ahead and run the pipe, and then where do we end up?
Nah, I disagree. I don't think that's a purview of the SLI.
Couldn't you get by with just.
Sewer commissioners, not SLI.
Excuse me, sewer commissioners.
Couldn't you get by with just proof of bordering, proof of ordering with the sewer line, proof of your property being directly adjacent to the sewer line and not, and not go through that process? Because you're talking about one in 100 cases where everybody's got to now send out notifications.
Sure.
And sewer extension, you absolutely, and from my perspective, it should be up to you guys to send out the notifications, because it's a notification of a hearing that you guys are holding. When we do that, you don't have any idea what we put in that letter. What if we do something wrong in the letter and people say, oh?
I, I can understand that point, but what do you do when the zoning board has a hearing?
They go, they do, the zoning board notifies the butters.
Petitioner, well, the petitioners.
They pay for it.
The petitioner, no, the petitioners go to the assessors to get the list from the assessors. Then, then the petitioner gives it to the town to mail out.
With alcohol licenses, the applicants are required to notify the butters, and that's required by statute, so.
I understand that, but you see, in this case, we're, we're a little unusual that you're actually approaching the butters with a connection, particularly if you border, directly border the property or the sewer line. It does, it's burdensome. I pay out, we filled it out, we were the first ones to fill this out, this permit. There has not been another one to fill out this permit as laid out. And if you're going to continue it, you may want to address things like, you need to get a list of, register a list of the butters from the assessor. And then, it says, send a letter to all the butters.
Yeah.
It doesn't say what to say. It doesn't say, why approach market? I said, we sent a list, list of, we sent a letter to all the butters. And she said, well, good. I said, but you don't have any proof of that. So, as a, as a late person, I don't know that I have to send registered mail out to people. So that, and I didn't know that we had to notify them. When it says write them a letter, I said, hey, we're connecting to the sewer, and that one.
Yeah.
So, so clarification is needed on that. And you may even address the issue of, you've got three different scenarios covered under the same permit application. That's sewer extension, forced main, and a regular connection. So, if they, you'd want to clarify which is important for which and make it easier for the next applicant.
Actually, good point with respect to.
I haven't tried to think. It's just been burdensome to go through the process. And I think I would have felt more comfortable about coming before you guys to clarify the, the application prior to my going through the months or the waiting period that we went through. Not that it really slowed us down.
You should have really had this conversation asked after we voted.
We haven't voted yet.
I know.
Oh, yeah.
I know. Don't keep, don't keep piling on. Actually.
See, he spoke too quick.
There's a long conversation about the capacity of sewer treatment plant, whether it can handle one more single pound of water, which I'm sure it can.
I suspect it probably will again.
Well, presently, we can.
Right.
But I would, I would agree with you. I, I, there are cases where we want people to know. You're absolutely right.
Absolutely, yeah.
And notifying for a tie-in to the sewer that if you're just doing a straight tie-in to the sewer, what are our, what are the major concerns? A, that the facility has enough, that the facility has enough capacity to handle it. The second thing is that if you're going to go across the road, we want to make sure that it's done to, and conformed with the town. The, and that's the biggest thing in my account.
Yeah.
Three is that how you tie in, like when, when Mike Wissman tied in his, it was very important, because he was coming up with a forced main, that we wanted to go with the flow versus against the flow. So, we talked about, we talked about that. It was important how it's tied in. And the same thing for you, with you being, I think it's important that we talked to our wastewater treatment operator, what you did, and again, very simple things, which your guys probably would have done. Make sure you tie in above the, above the flow, blah, blah. Those are important. I don't necessarily, I, I may, may agree with you, which is unusual, but it, it, it may, it may be onerous on, especially for just a sewer tie-in.
There are.
A straight, a straight, a straight tie-in. So, yeah, I think we can put, we should put that, Margaret, if we could. I would recommend putting that up for discussion very soon.
You have that before you tonight, actually.
Wonderful.
Next phase. We actually have the policy.
I think you want to clarify things. I don't think.
And I understand how we got there, because a couple, in the last couple of years, we've had two instances where we've talked about forced mains.
Yeah.
And you're right. That is, that is a, that is a right of way. Although, you could theoretically bring it down, you could bring it down the, in the town layout, and you probably wouldn't have to have a conversation with the butters. So, that's why we probably did what we did.
Does that not show up in the, in the site plans, though, when you request a site plan?
It did under the forced mains. The last policy was adopted to include where the, where the ties are, what the total length is, what the size is, what the capacity is, that's actually in the policy. And some of the policy was reactive to that.
We don't see the policy. All we see is the application, so it's kind of hard to simulate one to the other.
Right, right.
Correct.
So, I guess, I guess the balance from a sewer commissioner's perspective would be, is it onerous to have one application that covers all types of ties? Or is it onerous to have three applications, and you've got to choose the application? Right? Which, which one do you do? How do you go about the governing piece, I guess? There's always a fine line.
If you do it with one application, it's just, you know, if, if.
We can have parts A, B, and C on the application.
Skip this one, let's skip that.
Exactly.
Right. Yeah, we can probably.
Instructional paragraph or something like that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I can just say that we accomplished our goal. We got the Williams with their money, so we can change the policy now. But yeah, you're right. I mean.
What type, what, what policy? I'm sorry, what type of application?
It's an interesting thing. That, that is a good point. I agree.
It was interesting to me.
Well, I know.
It was just confusing. I, I.
I can understand.
Not want to have someone else have to go through the same thing.
Nice.
Yeah, I can understand that. Absolutely.
Perfect. Any concerns of the butters?
No, not whatsoever.
Nice.
Except the house that's really across me. You know, I wish someone would do something about that.
I think Bank of America has that, don't they?
The sign does a nice job.
No.
I heard some, I heard someone might be quasi-living there.
Well, I guess the advertisement on the porch is false, then.
It's financed by me. They hold the mortgage on it.
I see.
They also pay the taxes.
Right.
Obviously, because we got the letter back from our neighbors with the pitch paddles.
Before we digress, Mr. Chair.
Sure. Well, there's no other discussion with respect to the sewer tie application in front of us, and we do continue with our policy discussion after this, as well as the permit. Is there any more comment of the sewer commissioners?
Good luck.
If not, if not, we have an application in front for 210 North Main Street. And pretty straightforward, all the paperwork is in place. The recommendation of the sewer operator is in place, as well, guidance from the sewer operator, as well as a thumbs up from the highway superintendent. There's no more discussion. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion made in second to approve the tie at 210 North Main Street. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Three to zero. Congratulations.
You just send a letter, or you just put something in?
Sign the application?
Yes.
You're going to be ready to go.
Will be signed off, and then, once the inspections happen, those will, those will be signed off and sent back for the plot.
Just like the regular process. How's the building inspector to work with on the site subject? Good.
Watch that contractor go, okay?
That's, it's been great.
Good.
It's, it's nice to have somebody on board who will be working with us and get this, get this going in the right direction.
Super.
Be really helpful.
Excellent. I'm glad to hear that. Congratulations. Welcome to Sunderland, Mr. Williams. Perfect. Okay, next up.
North Carolina. We're about to, North Carolina.
Um, Morissa, Charlotte area?
I have relatives down in Denver.
Oh, wow, yeah, so that's.
On the other side of the lake.
Yeah.
Nice.
On the, the Mayberry side, the Mayberry side of the lake.
There is one?
No, it is. The Mayberry was supposedly in Denver, that area.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. Okay. Come on up, Marty. Bob, nice to see you. How's your summer schedule going, Marty?
It's just divine.
How was your trip to Europe?
Trip was good. Before I started work, I took a trip.
Good for you. Good for you. I'm sure you won't be on any trips now that you're in the position.
No, short trips.
You go into Sunderland, Whately, Deerfield, and Conway, Tom Hall's quite a big.
Quite a name. Well, we said at town meeting, congratulations in advance, and now that you're in the seat, congratulations. It'd be nice to work with you. Okay.
We saw you some additional paperwork from what you had.
Okay.
So, I can give that to you. Some of it is just further justification, maybe that's due now.
So, this predicated on the capital request via the warrant mechanism to annual town meetings for the four towns. We have asked a handful of questions about the capital list. The town, Sunderland town meeting approved a value, and the value included much of the security and building work at the, at the school. We had questions about the remaining items on the list. And then, over the since-town meeting, we've had correspondence back and forth about how do we get those other items funded? Before we move, and again, we have, we have, we have competing views on different town councils, just the way it all shook out. Bottom line is, an appropriation to accommodate some of the funding for buildings and security. So, before we plow into that, how's that work going?
Well, nothing's happened.
To the, you know, to the best of my knowledge, I have been told anything was 100% approved.
Okay.
Given go-ahead. So, from, from my perspective.
Nothing's happened yet.
Because we haven't been told to.
Okay.
To move forward.
Okay.
There was a question that I had, and I looked again at the warrant today.
Yep.
The way that the article was worded. And I still don't have clarity about what the intent was on that.
Okay.
And maybe we can talk about that. What I know is that Deerfield.
Yep.
Or Whately and Conway voted the entire request. Deerfield voted three of the requests, only two match up with what you suggested and what Conway and Whately suggested.
Okay.
Your article stated that unless there was uniformity in all four towns voted, that you didn't, my liberal interpretation of this, you didn't want to be left holding the bag if everybody didn't agree.
That's exactly what council had recommended. It's exactly the intent of the vote.
Yep.
Okay. So, my concern is, I really only have agreement on three items.
Right, go ahead.
If, if the intent is to stick with the current regional agreement, where we have three of the four towns, even though there was question that you couldn't do that with capital improvements, then we're a stalemate, because I only have two of the towns who have approved it.
Right.
Until the board approves this to go back to town meeting to be, to be addressed again.
Correct. So, is that what your understanding is? So, right now, we have not been able to do anything, because we don't have a vote on anything but two items.
I think we have to get our council to talk to their council. Because our council had an opinion, and that was, and I'm going to, I'm going to go out on a limb here, that if there's a baseline that is first and foremost the, the agreement, because this wasn't, this is not part of the budget process.
Correct.
It was a warrant article. So, the agreement not applicable. As a warrant article, however, if there was a measure of, if there was a measure of continuity across the participating towns, either in subject or theme or dollar value, that that appropriation would pass.
Across all towns.
Across all towns. So, if you ask for two bucks and everybody said you get one, fine. If you ask for two bucks and everybody said you get one, 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 and two, you still get one. I think that's the way our council's view was. Again, because the agreement itself isn't applicable, in their opinion, under the warrant article process. Not a budget process, different kettle of fish.
Had, had Deerfield, had Deerfield taken the same vote as Sunderland?
Right.
Sunderland's vote would have held.
Got it.
Deerfield just happened to be vote, you know, a lesser amount for fewer of the projects, and so.
Correct. And they were very specific in the items that they chose.
Okay.
So, there were only two of the things that they chose.
Right. So, clarification.
Well, we chose one, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Correct.
Nine.
Right.
You did all the safety and security.
Right.
We did all those.
And I, my hope was that Deerfield would have done the same, so that we would at least have gotten that.
Right, yeah.
Now, we realized that our mistake was, because we had never gone through a capital improvement request before, that we didn't come in and include it in the entire budget. And that way, the regional agreement would have stood by having three of the four towns. We will never do that.
Right, right.
So, in the meantime, we're kind of stuck, because I think the intent of Deerfield, and I think the intent of Sunderland, and certainly of Conway and Whately, was that we address the safety and security items.
Yep.
But right now, we're not able to address anything. So, I have not gone before the town of Deerfield until we had a conversation with you all, because I believe that they too are having a special town meeting in September to address some of the same things that you are.
Okay.
So, so we're here tonight to give you any additional information you would like that we have. And also, to be honest with you, to plead our case for a van and a truck. And I know that was not part of what you all intended, but I thought at least we need to make people aware of what our situation is. So, that's why we're here, and I hope that's why you want us here.
That's exactly right. In many ways, I think it's important to understand that, you know, our, our common goals are actually in many ways aligned. And with that, with that said, we can start talking about, there's no doubt in, certainly this board and the town meetings vote to take care of the building and the security pieces. Pretty straightforward. That was brought forward by the board. We had questions throughout the entire spring about vehicles.
So, if I could, so you have an easy method to do this also.
Okay.
You could, you can, you can do a debt exclusion.
Okay.
And very simply, you can make, you can make the presentation.
The agreement.
And you can, and you can ask the town, I mean, just by right.
Mm-hmm.
And the towns may not say to do anything. And just, you could just go out and say that you're going to borrow X amount of dollars.
Way to do it.
For capital improvement, and you give the options to the town if they want to, to hold a town meeting or not, a special town meeting, and if the town say, no, go ahead, we think it's a good idea. You can just do it on your own.
And have the assessment on the next budget cycle.
Right.
As a district, you have that opportunity with respect to debt, in particular excluded debt.
Right.
That's the way it was done with the ball field lighting. It's exactly the way.
We've done that before. So, I mean, that's, that's a very straightforward, easy method to do.
Okay. I will look into that.
Okay.
And I appreciate the ideas. I did not have it.
Yeah.
Well, and, and I would say, and I would, I would say that it's an idea. I can tell you in the past, I don't, we would probably bring it to our, to our voters just so that they know what's going on. But most towns, you know, in the past, some towns have decided to do it, and some towns have decided, you know, not to do it. So, it's pretty straightforward. I, I would say now, because, you know, you are talking about stuff that's a little different. Like, we don't really ever talk about van purchases or, or truck purchases, per se. And, and, and to me, your security issues really are something that you should be taking care of anyways. I mean, if you came to us and told us that you were going to, you were going to, you were going to borrow the money or for the security issues, I wouldn't even, I don't think I would bring that to the town, just because I know that's an important thing for you to have done.
So, question for you. If Whately and Conway do not have special town meetings coming forward that I'm aware of, they, I have to have some sort of means to communicate this to them. Would it also have to go before a special town meeting?
No.
In those two towns?
Yes.
No, you'd, you'd write a note to the boards of selectmen, and the selectmen would decide if they would go or not.
Well, I, I guess, yeah, depends on when you're incurring debt, though, and what, what impact it's going to have on the assessment.
Wouldn't be until next year.
Okay. And then, the other thing is, I know in, in, you know, for towns, for cities and towns, there are very specific reasons that, that a town can borrow money. So, I don't know if those rules apply. So, you'd have to be sure that, you know, for example, for, for a truck, you may have five, you know, a five-year borrowing limit, things like that. So, those are other things just to look into, so.
But every one of your, every one of your, your security issues, that's, that's why you would do it. I would think.
That's a very clean mechanism, and again, it's been done in certainly our, our tenure on the board for other projects at the school.
Well, it gives, it gives, it gives the, the school district the opportunity to, to, to make those decisions or make those calls, you know, when they, they see fit, so. I would think that, to me, we had no question, we had, I had no question about, you know, the security issues. And personally, I hope, I hope we can get, get those taken care of right away.
Do you know the timing of this, how quickly?
I probably have, you probably have to submit it to the towns. They probably have, probably two or three weeks. I don't know. I'd have to go back and look at chapter 71, but.
Something that feasibly could happen by the end of September.
Oh, sure. Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, I can touch base with Patty about, the business manager, about how fast, how fast bonding can happen. That's, that's really the financing part of it.
So, so that's, that's another option. You've got two towns that have voted to approve the, the full request. Deerfield, Whately, and Sunderland may call a special town meeting in September for the regional ambulance service. And it would be the board's prerogative to add any other articles to that particular warrant. So, you know, that option might still be.
What is the timeframe? What is the timeframe on, on having an article added to your warrant?
Well, we haven't, we haven't called a special or developed a warrant yet.
Well, but I'll, I'll, let me clarify. You can submit a, an article at any time of the year.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
It requires two, oh, sorry.
And, and then
One hundred.
And, and then it depends. If you, if you wanna force a town meeting, you have to have twenty percent and or two hundred signatures. If you want within, uh, the next, the next available special town meeting, it's ten percent or a hundred signatures. And you can put it at, if you just wanted to, definitely just ten signatures. But, and I would say, because you're our school committee, you're a school district, professional courtesy between us, you would just give it to Margaret whenever you want it. And the next time it came up, we'd put, we'd, we'd vote to put it on.
Okay.
So, if you have an article.
My vet said Patty, when I have a conversation with her tomorrow.
Yeah, so if you have an article.
Talk me out of this for some reason.
What's Plan B?
But if you have an art, if you have an article that you wanna put forward, you, you give that to Margaret tomorrow and the next ti- next time we have a special town meeting would go on.
Just request the article be put on the next town meeting warrant.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Are you suggesting this as, could, you know, this really what precipitated this request? I put together a group of projects that went out about five years and are asking, talking about the first three years and try to order stuff. Are you suggesting on a yearly basis that you use this mechanism?
I think the borrowing would be.
I, I would think what, what you, in my opinion, what you would do is you would look at what you need to do over the next ten years. And then, and then take
The capital plan.
And, and bring that plan to us and, and use that mechanism to do that. Correct. And, and I would, I would, I would consider doing that way so the towns know how, how, what they're budgeting for the next, you know, the next, whatever, how many years it is.
Our first, you know, the really, in, in the high school, we, we haven't attempted to find a mechanism for funding this group of projects.
Right.
This is our first attempt at it. So, what I'm just, you know, as well as trying to satisfy this one requirement.
Sure.
I'm also looking for longer term.
Right.
One of the things that was difficult for me to deal with, um, in, in your request for backup stuff is getting really detailed pricing on, we're really conceptual budgeting at this time. So, you know, I, I stuck a few things in there just to show you how I got some of the backup. But I really haven't went out yet and, and bid every one of these projects. Because it's difficult to get contractors to spend their time, uh, putting the energy and effort into, um, detailed bids when you can't even say to them, you've got funding yet.
Right.
Right. And for, for instance, it was like this year, you had, you had a van and a pickup, okay? Now, now typically, what we would have, in, in our town, most towns would have trouble with two purchases like that anyway. So, like, what, what we, then you'd say, okay, maybe, maybe you identify the van as your top priority. Then you buy a new van and then you buy a van with fifteen thousand miles on it, or twenty thousand mile. And say, you're not gonna get thirty years out of the van or the truck. But the truck is going to Hurley Hee Park and the town of Sunderland. It's, so it, it doesn't have to have the same, dependability, I'll, I'll use that word, as the van that may be traveling to Newton for a volleyball game. So, and, and so, or that you would say you would use the, the pickup for seven years instead of ten years, but you may get it at, you know, two-thirds the cost. So, so that, that's, that'd be the, when, 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 and, and again, we'd never had that conversation at the beginning, beginning of the year, because by the time you, you were making the presentation of the budgets, the budgets were all pretty well set. And we're gonna buy a new van and a new tr-
Right.
But we didn't have the, well, would you consider maybe buying a used truck and a new van, you know?
Or staggering the assets.
Right. Or, and, and that would, right, and that would, that would start to stack.
Typically, I think you'd do that. Unfortunately, both these vehicles, I guess, were purchased at the same time.
Absolutely. Trying to break the cycle.
And honestly, there was, there was some thought in my mind that we would be trying to negotiate some of those kinds of things with the numbers that I brought forward. I'm guessing if we bought two brand-new vehicles, it probably would be more money than the money we've asked for.
Right, right.
Um, have you looked at, um, this, at, at state procurement? Have you looked at any of the, um, um, the state authorized vendors on the procurement website to look to see what they have available? And would you be working through, um, state procurement for it?
I have not yet with the vehicle.
Okay. I'm, I'm happy to talk with you about state procurement and, um, and their, their process. So.
For vehicles?
For vehicles, yeah.
I'm not, I, I wasn't aware that program existed.
Yeah.
That's a great idea.
I can pass along the information to you.
Well, not only that, but you also have the right to piggyback on any contract that's done in the state also.
You do?
Yep. So, like, if you masses buying twenty vehicles and they're getting a very good price, you could buy at their price.
Right.
So, with respect to vehicle purchases, that was an area of concern. You wanna wait and see the information that comes forward? Or do you wanna, you wanna express that concern now, saying, listen, do you really need both vehicles in the same period? Or are we gonna see a bundled package and a, uh, the potential for an exclusion coming forward? I think it's important that, like, as Mar- as we, as we both agree, to be able to leave with a Plan B.
Right.
Right? That's important. Because we know there are issues that all the towns agree on. So, it, how do we, uh, bridge the gap on the areas that are, um, perceived, that are short-funded? We're talking really about a funding mechanism, not necessarily about, about, uh, about a poor plan, on the contrary. So.
Well, we, Bob and I had talked and we had agreed that the van really was, um, the top priority.
That's priority, okay.
Mainly because it was used so frequently and, um, you know, we would have to do away with some progress if we do not have the van.
Right, sorry.
By saying that, I don't wanna minimize the problems for the truck because we have personnel in the truck. But I also know if we were to buy two new vehicles, again, we'd get into that same cycle.
Right.
So, um, we had talked about perhaps looking at something either lesser
Yep.
or could we wait a year or?
Sunderland bought a used, um, highway dump truck a couple of years ago. I know there are several towns that do it. And it's actually a very good, uh, vehicle. Um, you know, it's used to plow the streets and sand and haul dirt and rocks and everything. Would there be, would, do you think you could give any, um, consideration at all to, um, to looking at a slightly used, I know, I know a van is, is really important for security, but a slightly used pickup, say with ten thousand fifty?
Well, I, I don't, I don't have an issue about slightly used. I don't have an issue with, we could do repair to the vehicle we currently have and get another year out of it. My issue is getting the best vehicle for the school. That's gonna be the best outcome. In, you know, I, I'm a little bit reluctant to invest a lot more money in the truck for repairs.
Sure.
Um, it seems like a bottomless pit for that.
Right.
But with that said, yes, for a certain amount of repairs, we could get through another year with that truck. I've asked a couple of, I've been dealing with the commercial vehicle department at Belize Chevrolet. I asked them for some information. They're gonna be bringing it to me. Um, if there is a listing for certain firmant that may or may not have some used vehicles on it, I'd love to look at that.
I'm just wondering if there's any opportunity for, you know, to, um, you know, to look at options like that for cost efficiency. That, so you may, you know, there may be a way to, you know, to look at both. And, and their life expectancies are gonna be different. You're, you probably have much greater use of the student van than you do the, the pickup, right?
And the student van, the unfortunate part too, is that we have so many different drivers.
Uh, good point. Yeah, yeah.
So, it's multiple drivers, multiple drivers, lots.
I rode in that van.
And, and, yes. And distance.
That one was new.
Oh, no, I was, it wasn't new when I rode in it.
Yeah. I think you took everyone out.
Yes, he did.
Yeah.
And, and again, my, my, my biggest concern, my concern, was the way it was presented. I thought there, I, I thought there could be better, I know there can be better communication between us and, and you guys. And, and, and to have that discussion, be partners versus, that, I think that's what we were saying. And, and I think that was reflected in our town vote. It was like, in my, and, and after again, my, it wasn't. And we, and we weren't saying if you need the van or not need the van. Um, but it was a way to have our dis- it was a way to have the discussion.
Plus some of the valuable information about procurement.
Right.
You know, that, that gets shared too.
Yeah, I'll definitely pass that along.
Yeah, no, this is important because I'm, I'm on the job a month. So, I'm learning every day.
Right. And, and but the discussion points are, it, it, and, and also is, is looking down, your loan will be paid off soon.
Mm-hmm.
And when you go into Frontier, which, um, probably most people don't have the opportunity, but I have had the opportunity. Um, and, and usually I go in there every three years when we do contract negotiations. And, and to me, it's striking about how little it changes.
Right.
Now, that's a good compliment.
Right.
Um, 'cause usually, um, in a, in a high school environment or educational environment, you know, your radiators, they start getting kicked in. We start, we start losing ceiling tiles, ceiling tile.
You know, don't get replaced.
And et cetera, et cetera. And that's not happening. So, that, that's actually a compliment about how little it actually is changing. It's staying very well maintained.
Mm-hmm.
That being said, we also recognize that if you don't continue to make upgrades, then you're gonna start losing that. It's, 'cause at some point, there needs to be work done. So.
And that's basically, the list that I'm trying to bring forward, that is exactly what you're saying. And I don't think, you know, there's a few of these items or safety items, we'd like them, to get them done. But, but none of this stuff is at crisis level yet. Um, but what we're trying to do is get a list in towns and make them aware of the backlog with building, so we can have this dialogue and work together and find ways to begin to fund it. Because I, I'm guessing there was probably some sticker shop because no one was listing, was listing these projects.
Right.
Absolutely.
And I'm hoping our meeting in September will be a good start on that, so that we can outline, um, you know, what the needs of the building are now and in the future. And if people have some funding ideas, terrific. I mean, we're all in for the same, you know, for the same goal. So.
So, we got two pieces of, uh, homework here. Uh, the first is the funding mechanism, debt, debt exclusion, right? And then view of our view of, I mean, a couple of our towns share the same council. What's the mechanism? Won't really get appropriated when those four towns appropriated X. Is there a common denominator? And can that money be spent, right?
Right, and go forward.
And, and you may well have an appropriation that all councils agree on. So, yeah, that, that's legit and passes muster. Go ahead. But we need to understand the Deerfield component, one of the member towns' components, about the specificity of the article. How, how does that vote impact it? Again, that's, that'll be a piece of our homework. We commit to get into that too in short order. And then you talk with a business manager, talk with Patty about debt. And the debt piece isn't something that we would necessarily jump up and down about, uh, about incurring. However, it may be a mechanism for this, uh, particular, uh, list of projects. And it may be the mechanism that can be explored as your three and five and ten-year list starts happening. How do you actually go about phasing that in so that as your, uh, construction debt schedule drops off, you may have a capital debt schedule that begins to take off and keeps the assessments at a relatively modest, uh, rate? So, I think that's important. That's just long-term budgeting. It goes right along with the long-term capital planning. So, with respect to the vehicle, I suspect that's gonna be your homework coming back in, in this direction. I don't think we had any disputes at all about the buildings, at all. Nothing on the list that was presented came up with respect to it. That was all passed by the towns. So, we'll, we'll, we will drill down on what common denominators the four warrants meant. And is, does it constitute an appropriation you can act on in really short term? And then touch base with, with, uh, the business manager about what does that debt schedule mean and can this be excluded? Some of these things may not be able to be either by volume or by lifecycle. But that's homework on the administration side. They may simply say, uh, your, your, uh, bonding agents may go, no, 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 we're not gonna give you a thousand, whatever. Whatever a, a debt schedule could look like. It's not like boilers and roosts, Bob. It's different. Okay, anything else with respect to, uh, the capital pieces here? Homework, information brought forward?
So, should I, once I acquired information?
Yep.
Get back to Margaret?
Yep, touch base with Margaret. We'll do the same thing feeding forward to you with respect to council's opinion.
Okay.
Because again, at the, at the night of the town meeting, town council was pretty clear what, what his interpretation was. And since, you know, he represents more than one town, it might well be that there's some consensus there.
Mm-hmm.
Not him personally, but their office.
Right.
Yeah, might well have appropriated something.
Now, just a reminder, while, while Marty and Bob are here.
Exactly.
The, um, Frontier's meeting with the four towns is scheduled for September twelfth at seven P M. in the Frontier Media Center.
Nice.
You all are in, right. It will be a big meeting.
I think it's at Thursday night.
I believe it is.
Yep, it is.
Wow, that's a different night.
It's seven P M., yeah. It's already in the calendar.
Friday is the next day.
Add it to your calendar, David.
Good strategy, good strategy.
That one I already have on there.
Perfect. You have the camera for the next two and a half minutes. What would you like to say?
Um, it's nice to see all of you. I hope you've had a lovely summer. Um. Is that it? I don't know. Do you have anything else to say?
Oh, just one more out in the back. Albie?
I was gonna ask the board of selectmen.
Come on up, Frank.
But since, I was gonna ask the board of selectmen this question, but I see John, I mean.
Bob's here?
Bob's here.
Yep.
I've been asking the school committee principal every
Uh-huh.
about that. This must be seen at the satellite rotting. It's been done, has been used for how many years? And it's.
The satellite dish at the elementary school, Albie?
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
And, uh, you notice the water, this spring, the water goes right up to the, why can't they get rid of it?
That's on the, that's on the west side. That's on the west side.
Where exactly is it?
On the, uh.
It's on the west side of you, leave by the sixth grade door.
Yeah.
It's in that swale there.
You wouldn't see it?
Somebody that's been dealing with scrap metal that has been taking tons of that kinda stuff for me for free. We just removed one from the high school.
High school. So, what do you have to do?
I have it right.
I appreciate your suggestion and I'll do my best to get it done before, in the next, in the next month or so.
Well, I'll give you a twelve months.
No, we, we need to prove ourselves.
How are the lights on the driveway working out now? The LED fixtures, are they all set now?
They've now got motion sensors on them.
Yep.
They shut off, they come on when people drive in. Uh, we removed the one at the very, you know, they, they put the solar, um, uh.
All the hoods?
Light on the sign, which lights the end of the driveway.
Good.
So, we removed that last fixture and put sensors on the other fixtures. Um, I've drove through there a couple of times. They seem to be working pretty good. So, I think we can solve that one.
Good.
Mr. Kowalski, what do you say to that?
Go ahead.
It's been done a couple of years ago. I mean, it's, it's really improved. Do you know, it was blinding when you broke down.
That first light, yeah.
And that light, no, it was good.
There you go.
Well, you gave, you gave him a. You gave him a year to take the satellite dish down. So, we'll see you in a month?
No. We've got a break. I'm not on the agenda.
You're always on the agenda under public comment.
That's true.
Anything else with respect to, Marty, wait, I recognized Albie. Is there anything else you wanna add before?
No, I'm happy. I'm fine. Thank you for your time.
Look forward to, look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you. I will be, yes, I will be.
I'll be impressed.
Thanks, Marty.
Okay.
Thank you, Bob.
Have a nice evening, everyone.
Okay, Albie, public comment?
I just, uh. It's gonna be a problem. I guess it wasn't on TV, but.
Uh-oh.
You know, the, um, swamp area by the school is really, that water is rising.
Uh-huh.
Of course, we've had a lot of rain this year. But I also mentioned to the school committee that, and I don't know, are they ever gonna put these, the, uh, solar system in?
Well, the conservation committee's meeting in the next couple of weeks about that.
Because, I'll tell you, they, uh, behind Steve Crow's barn there, the water's not going, he's getting a big pond in there. The water's not moving. And if they, I don't know what they're gonna do with the satellite, if it goes on top or they dig, could be a problem there because that water table's going up. In fact, they should have a fence, uh, around that area. Cause you, you know, there's children at night with their families and that. And during it's, uh, when the school's open, the, the kids are watched pretty good. They have all the parents and so, but like now, there's kids running around and everything.
Mm-hmm.
And you gotta worry, you know. It should be something, uh.
And you're talking about, if, if, if you don't mind, you're talking about the area, just so everyone knows. And you're talking about, if, if, if you don't mind, you're talking about the area, just so everyone knows, you're talking about that area as you enter the driveway to the left, right behind?
To the right.
To the right, okay.
It's that, it's getting larger all the time. It used to be just a ditch, now it's getting grown and, and the water, I noticed now you can see the water. Of course, you've got a good grade that it won't go above, but still, the water's deep. And what do you think? That water is not moving.
You know, it's very interesting and, and hopefully, there's gonna be a presentation shortly, I think, on, on a study that was done in that area.
Primary ditch, yeah.
Yes, Conservation Commission just had a study completed.
That's correct.
But one of the big problems is they discontinued, they built a ditch that was the main ditch on the west side of the school. Which is that like this. Now, that water, I used to go, uh, track the water cracks. It, it was like five, six feet deep. And when they built the school, they blocked everything, they covered it right up. And there's, uh, that water went by, uh, the garage there. And it really, uh, I thought was, well, all the way from Goodview all the way down. And that's not raining.
Down past Roy's.
Well, I, I hope, I hope that, that, that study's gonna come out and, and I, it's been done by, by, by university, people in university. And I, I think there's a lot of good data in there. And, and David, you heard when they're supposed to make that presentation?
No, I haven't actually. I've been wondering too.
But maybe we can do that because I haven't read it. I haven't, I haven't read it. I've just heard snippets, but I, I would think it'd be, it, it would behoove us to have, to, to get that out so, so we can, we can address some of the issues.
See the, see the actual magnitude.
Correct.
I mean, issue, issue by issue, looking at it, individual areas is different than looking at it as the system.
Correct.
And that's, if you're looking at the system, exactly.
So maybe we can get that information for you very shortly.
Did talk to the police chief.
About the ditches? About the ditches?
No, about, I have never seen, I didn't, you know, I don't go on Main Street, but, but I've been going to see Jim Williams quite a bit. And, uh, I have never seen so many trucks and cars on Main, on Main Street. I mean, uh, one sixteen is slightly less traffic than that. Where are they all coming from? And there, there are large trucks.
Coming from sixty-three?
And they, they go like, very, very head and over there, fifty, sixty, I think.
I think there's been a concern for a long time about truck traffic. Matter of fact, if you think back when Mr. Chief Heim was on. And, and at that time, he was gonna look into making the turnoff at High Point into a truck waystation. Actually, he was gonna have people and, uh, his officers that would be qualified to do truck inspections, but, um, I think it's been a, been a concern.
Sign up there, say, uh, blind.
I don't know how he's gonna do it. I just.
What's the mechanism, right?
I don't think they pay much attention to that.
You know, it, it's, 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 um.
Oh, you see it.
Well, you would.
You make, you make a, a very good point. And I think sometimes the hardest thing is a lot of the traffic on that road, not all, but a lot of the traffic are people that live in the area. And if just, and if, right, and if they just, and, and if we all just observe the speed limit, we'd probably be much better off. Um, and I think that's like most, most things is that, and, and, and don't get me wrong. I mean, there's people use that to go from Route Two to, to ninety-one. I don't know why. But they think it's quicker, but I don't know if it is or not.
Or to divert around?
But, but the state police watch that also. When, when they have a waystation set up, you know, then trucks would use it. Um, and, but I don't understand how it's quicker for trucks, you know, I don't think I'd wanna be downshifted through all the turns and everything. But I guess for them, they think it's easier, so.
The town has that L E D signboard. Maybe the police could actually put it, you know, put it up in different areas just to remind people of what the speed limit is. Um, it's there.
Because you know, you go by Hope or.
Yeah, I know, by Ernie's house, Ernest's house.
You're in the low left and then you, there's a, you go high. I'm getting out of Jim Williams's yard. It's clear. All of a sudden, you see this truck coming up.
Sure.
Because he's below the dip.
Right. I, I do know that when the, uh, when, when the police have talked about that, um, one advantage is that the trucks have is they have C B radio. That's what they always said because, and you may get one. May go get the rest of them.
That's right.
Complaining about it, it's called speeding.
With your seg, with, with your segue?
Yes, exactly.
Well, see, I don't complain. Everything was positive.
It's always a treat to see you too.
Well, I, you, you should stay. I mean, we're gonna be talking about ambulances next, but.
Oh, is he coming in?
Yeah. Alright.
I gotta get him before he gets.
Tell him we're waiting for him.
I don't have air conditioning. I came in here.
Oh, it's a cooling center. Okay, no other public comment? If not, we'll move on to minutes. We have a, we have a seven forty-five appointment with the chief. He's running a little late. And David, you and I'll be voting on the fifteenth. Uh, and it'll be all three of us on July twenty-second.
Make a motion on the fifteenth.
I'll second the motion. Uh, motion's been made and seconded on the minutes for July fifteenth. All those in favor? Aye, two to zero, Margaret. And then on the twenty-second, uh, FCAT one oh one that night. As well as regional EMS.
Motion, second.
A motion made and seconded, uh, for the minutes of July twenty-second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Three to zero, Margaret. I'll wait for the chief. We have a, uh, application for an underground tank. Uh, and essentially it was an administrative change. And that is underground storage of two tanks. Uh, six, six, eight Amherst Road. And this was administrative change. Name of company, Jim? So holding company changed. No change in tank size, no change in, uh, vintage of tanks. No work was done there. But just like many things, we keep a running list. It's interesting, people who wanna participate, uh, in the SEPT, uh, team or understand what we actually have. There is an asset allocation, uh, map about where certain things are all over town, whether there are oil tanks, underground oil tanks or other. Uh, this is one of those applications for the, uh, tanks to make, basically make that, stay on that list in their current condition. So this is authorization. Got it. Got it. So there's continuity across, actually across the license itself. That makes sense. So this is a signature of, uh, the chair, but in times past, we didn't have a quorum and wanted, oh, I'm sorry. We didn't have the full board and didn't want to authorize a chair to sign without the full board as a pass, been practiced in the past for certainly this board. It's twenty thousand gallons of fuel over there, underground. All them gasoline tanks.
And this is a permanent record.
Confirm motion, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I, I will say it's better that we know the tanks are there than not knowing where the tanks are there. And that can usually get us in a whole bunch more trouble not knowing where the tank is there. If you know they're there, there's certain things, there's certain requirements that they have for inspections and testing, et cetera, so.
This could go on G I S.
I was just thinking the same thing. This is gonna be another, another, um, group of data that's gonna be added to more layers for G I S, yeah.
Perfect sense.
Love to put in everything we have for hazards listed.
Yeah, that'd be great. And you can access it from anywhere.
Motion, Mr. Chair?
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to authorize the chair to sign. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, three to zero. Okay, we'll sign that. It'll be downstairs. Uh, while we wait, we have town administrators' updates.
Okay, I actually have some. Uh, I have some good news. Um, town's excess levy capacity is forty-four thousand, six hundred and five dollars and sixty-four cents. And, um, we have gotten the final cherry sheets for F Y fourteen, bringing the town's total excess capacity to a hundred and forty-five thousand, five hundred and ninety-eight dollars. So, um, that's very, very good news considering, um, where the town was a few years ago.
So. Okay.
So, the solar project, it was already mentioned that the Conservation Commission is gonna have a public hearing on, um, the wetlands, on the solar parcels on August sixth, seven P M. And that's a hearing on the determination of applicability. Um, I have, I could probably just throw these up here just very quickly. I think most people are familiar with, um, the existing, the existing, uh, designs. And this is what the new proposed, oops, let's see, oops. Uh, elementary school layout. Um, it has increased in, uh, size uh, from about a hundred and sixty thousand watts to about three hundred and fifty thousand watts. And, uh, they are, they have, uh, have designed this to try to build within, um, within the wetlands regs. And the public safety complex array size has decreased significantly, uh, from three hundred and ninety-five thousand watts to two hundred and four thousand watts. And that's to stay away from the hydroic soils, uh, the reed bed area, um, the storm, the ditch that's actually on that property and away from the river. So those are the new proposed, uh, designs that will probably go before the, uh, the Conservation Commission next week. Um, the, uh, the, uh, solar contract has been in the hands of David Dineski at Copelman and Page uh, for probably two months now. Um, so I am going to touch base with him to see how that review is coming. Uh, but really, the bottom line is, uh, time is now getting short uh, for the project construction to start under the current year's caps. Alright, so green communities, um, the detailed energy audits, um, are continuing to be conducted at, uh, four of the five buildings that were named for the audits. The elementary school building is now being scheduled for the audit. Um, there's not much new in the way of progress on the North Main Street reconstruction project. Still waiting to hear from Franklin County T P O as to whether or not the project has gotten on the tip or is gonna get on the tip. Regionally EMS, you'll be discussing that, um, in a minute. Um, the intermunicipal agreement tonight will need, uh, further comments. I've given you a markup in your packets that you can look at based on last week's comments. Um, we, the FEMA snow assistance for the February eighth, two thousand thirteen storm, if you remember, that was that storm that dumped twenty-two inches of snow overnight. Um, we're gonna be getting about thirteen thousand dollars in FEMA reimbursement, uh, for that storm. I filed the paperwork, so that's now done. Um, the community-wide needs assessment survey, um, is still being developed by the C O G. They were hoping to try to have a survey developed in time for a possible September town meeting. So that could, that could be one means of distributing the survey. I didn't get very much feedback from boards and committees unfortunately. Um, but I did provide the board's goals and any other feedback I got from other boards and committees. Treasure collector position, you're gonna be discussing that shortly. Um, D L S conducted its technical assistance, uh, review for information technology. That was done on July second, and I understand they had their last conversation with local official today. And I'm sure we're going to see several recommendations on a variety of I T issues here. Um, and finally, um, I don't know if you remember, it's been a while, but, uh, we received a, uh, uh, D H C D Priority Development Fund grant, uh, for the Sadowski Park Housing Feasibility Study. I've made very, very little progress on that. My goal is to still try to have some of the, at least the title, uh, the title search stuff done and the survey done by November thirtieth, but, um, it's been slow going on my end. Um, ninety-five hundred dollars, the grant, uh, funds won't go very far. So to do anything further on that parcel, we may have to seek C P A funds for housing studies, so. That's, that's it.
Uh, uh, board updates. Was it yet? Pretty quiet summer?
Um, first, Mr. Chair, if I could, um, I'd just like to, once again, remind the town that at the present time, we do not have a treasurer collector.
Right.
And I just want, and one, one of the problems that we have in town is that when all our members are present, um, I, I believe that we run pretty efficiently. Conversely, is when we miss a person, like our treasurer collector, who is an integral part of many, on many things. A, from, you know, collecting taxes, two, a member of our financial team, it does put a strain on us. I would just like to thank Margaret and her staff for everything they've done to keep us running in a positive, uh, method. Uh, unfortunately, um, they may not be there. Um, but you can't forget that we're, we've lost somebody that had thirty-four hours, that's no longer here.
Right.
Um, so making up that time and, and how they do it, I think they've done an excellent job. Um, and I, and I just hope, um, that the residents of town understand that when you run lean, um, if they're inconvenienced because someone's, we're in the process of hiring someone, um, or the person gets sick or whatever, that we have these, but, but we don't have, um, assistants.
There's not a lot of bench strength there.
There's not a lot of, there's not a lot of, not a lot of bench strength. So, again, I would just like to thank Margaret for everything that she's done and, and the staff, because they have covered. And Margaret has a plan in place. I don't know how she did it, but she's able to get people in here to help and keep us moving forward in the positive direction. So Margaret, thank you very much. You're doing a very nice job.
Tax bills will be going out this week. Tax, we, the tax bills will be going out.
The second thing I'd like to say, Mr. Mr. Chair, is the other, um, couple of weeks ago, we, uh, we lost another longtime member of our community and, uh, Helen Telega. Um, Helen was in our town for many, many years and most of us. See, back when, when I was growing up, all of us, um, most of us, our first working experiences were on cucumber pickers, the back of cucumber pickers. And the first place that you would pick is they put you in the back with usually the, uh, matriarch of the family. So in my case, I spent my first half of summer so picking cucumbers next to Mrs. Laurinaitis. And then three years later, when I went to work for the Telegas after Los, Loskowskis, um, I spent my first four hours on Telegas working, picking next to Mrs. Telega. So I think back then is, a lot, we, a lot of us, our first at work experiences were with, um, people in our community working on the farms. And I owe, personally, I owe a lot to, um, farmers like Mrs. Telega and Mrs. Laurinaitis. And I would just like to offer my condolences to the Telega family because, um, she was, she was another very nice lady and who had a very positive influence on a lot of residents in our town. So to the Telega family, we'd like to offer my condolences. So that's about it, Mr. Chair.
I'll say. Okay, uh, next up in front of us, we have, uh, the chief. We're gonna talk about staffing. Now, people who watched last week reckon, or people know we had a meeting last week specific to, uh, the staffing levels of a proposed, uh, intermunicipal or three-town, uh, EMS service. Remember, we had back, well, two, two years ago, the origin, three years ago, the actual origin, then a, then a professional study, a recommendation, three towns voted, a recommendation to create a twenty-four-seven paramedic level, uh, amatory service, EMS service to cover the towns of, uh, Waitley, Deerfield and Sunderland. And, uh, we had our first crack, um, last week at staffing schedule. And the presentation was, was, uh, wide-ranging, was sound. There's, uh, labor units associated with, uh, staffing. There's budgets associated with staffing. And, uh, that first pass certainly left, uh, opportunity for a fair amount of discussion amongst the three towns. And so here, we're gonna have, uh, first pass at our discussion with that. Uh, Chief, at one point, you had worked with, uh, Margaret as well as, uh, the other director to talk about staffing. And, uh, not putting you on the spot, but, uh, what do you think about staffing?
Do you wanna answer that?
Well, well.
Can I, can I just say, I, I, if, Mr. Chief, if you don't mind, I, I think that, I think that the staffing that was proposed, um, last mon, last Monday, right, was, was fine if you're looking at us, if we're a mature department. was, was fine if you're looking at us, if we're a mature department. In my opinion, we're not at, my, my opinion, I don't think we're a mature department at this time. We're, we're something that's just starting, and, and I would strongly recommend, I mean, even under the gold that was originally produced by Mr. Baxter, he was talking three paramedic, three full-time paramedics and three full-time EMTs. We were presented, we, we were shown a presentation of four full-time paramedics and four full-time EMTs. I don't know if that's where we need to be right yet. I, I, personally, I, I would hope the board would take a stance that we should, at the high end, be three and three, but maybe start someplace, you know, with, and again, I would ask the chief for, for his recommendation, but, but I would say someplace less. And, and there's a couple of reasons for that. One, one reason is that we, we have to see how it works, you know, and now we're bringing.
We gotta get the show on the road first.
Right, and, and you're bringing these people in, and, 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 you know, you're hiring these multitude of people. Why, why wouldn't we start a little bit less with, with per diem? And, and you bring people, you know, bring the per diems in, and, and then, and then see how, and see what happened. You know, is it better to be run eight-hour shifts, or is it better to run twelve-hour shifts? If, is it, you know, where are we gonna be finally located? Are we gonna be located in, in the South Deerfield? Are we gonna be Sunderland? Are we gonna be the, the, the Western Mass Library? What kind of facilities are we gonna have for people to be in also? So I don't think that we're there yet. And, and that's a nice, the, the eight, to me, was fine, but I don't know if we're there yet, and maybe that's a three-year, four-year down the road, and not something for none. I hate to say that, Chief, before you talk, but I, I, I felt uncomfortable when I looked at, when I saw that presentation.
Right, and prior to that presentation last Monday, Margaret and I came up with a staffing schedule I'd put together, and she put it down on paper, where we came up with, you know, the existing staff that we have now, the three that are employed in Deerfield and the one in Sunderland, plus per diem, and accounting for paying call volunteers, you know, eight dollars an hour until a call comes in for that, answering a second call. And we were still within the budget that Russet presented to us, even though the deduction and twenty thousand dollars, and we were covering all, that's that way. I think we didn't, the proposal I put forward there that about three weeks ago was to, you know, use co-directors, not hire a full-time director and then a co-director assistant. Use co-directors with some of the existing people we have, and that way, in my mind, you could cover two shifts with those co-directors, and always somebody would be there to answer a problem or a staffing problem, whatever it is. And I thought those worked pretty well. And that would be my suggestion moving forward with that.
And I would, personally, I would concur with you, Chief, because I, I just, and, and I, and I hope it's not misunderstood what we're saying. The, the goal is to have a twenty-four-seven paramedic level service in the town. What's happening now is, is a discussion about how we get there. It's not if it's a good idea or a bad idea.
No, that's done.
And, and I hope that's understood. It's not, it's, sometimes people don't, we don't, we're no longer allowed to have a dialogue in our country. We're, we're, it's either, you're either for it or against it. And, and you can be for it with change also. So, and I just hope, you know, we're, our board is pretty used to discussing things like that, but sometimes other people take much harder lines. So I just wanted to say that I think it's important that that's realized.
I think that's the best fiscal way to go about it, you know, try to start slowly, maybe, with, you know, the existing staff, plus per diems, and work up from there.
Jim?
And I just wanna make sure everyone is clear, after reading some comments in the paper, it, it sounds like people aren't getting advanced life support or paramedic level service in South County. That's far from the truth. It's very rare if we can't get a paramedic truck to these people. The problem we're having is getting the initial response, the initial BLS truck or intermediate-level truck out the door in a timely manner. The paramedic truck is, is dispatched by protocol ninety percent of the time simultaneously with the BLS local service. And with that being said, the BLS services aren't waiting at any time for a paramedic to show up.
Sometimes they're waiting for us.
Yeah. A lot of times, we meet them on the way. We get there, load our patient up, we're, we're giving first aid, we're giving patient care, it's being done on scene, in the back of the truck, on the way to the hospital. There's no delay in patient care. I wanna make sure people are aware of that, they're not just sitting on the side of the road waiting for a paramedic.
That's a, a good point, and I think it's also a fine time to drill down on the, the original goal. You know, it sounded like the needle stuck in the groove sometimes, but it was the, the creation of a multi-town, twenty-four-seven, paramedic-level service that was initially staffed and back, and then infilled with the current, the current pool of resources. Because I had, along with Tom's comments about the, the level of paramedic and EMT on the full-time basis, we, we can't deviate from that original goal. That was the charge. How we are actually gonna go about getting there is the point we're having the discussion about now, and the other towns will be having discussions about this week, and we're meeting again next week to talk about our implementation and our timeline. So it's not to have a presentation with all three towns, and then for all three towns to go their separate ways and have a very separate discussion. On the contrary, this is the, this is the exploration part. Now, we, we've heard a fair amount about fitting inside of a budget, and, you know, like many good projects, this is an implementation project. You're, you're gonna define the what, and then build it, and then make sure it fits inside what that original budget was, or adapt the budget accordingly. So what we have is the staffing schedule presented last week, and we have another staffing schedule that's gonna be a discussion point moving forward next week. So the original goal of twenty-four-seven coverage with infill of either per diem, whatever the mechanism is, per diem available, and then responding accordingly, or maybe it is of somewhere between a mature department and the implementation scenario, because we still have to have a transition.
Well, that's it, there's gonna be an operational learning curve.
Exactly.
The staffing model has to accommodate that.
Right, that's a great way to put it.
That first year is gonna be a big learning curve to see how many calls.
You gotta feel your way through it a little bit.
And, and. Act accordingly there, and see how the staffing works. I think the staffing that I presented is gonna work fine, and there's plenty of per diem people in the Two County area that would be willing to supplement, you know, hundreds of days off working.
And you, you won't, yeah, you won't know how that works until, you know, until you, until you use it. You can't assume that it's not gonna work and just.
I had, I had somebody ask me about it Saturday, work, can, is there gonna be availability of shifts? And I'm like, yeah, you know, after we go to the town meetings, then we're gonna have like a day of, you know, advertising a paper and say, you know, end up applications, and, and she worked there.
Along, along those lines, I'll turn it back over to Tom here in just a second. I would be really, I would be really reluctant to simply create a full-time professional force that excludes all of the work of the volunteers, and people who are working through their credentials, because it takes time to maintain all of that and commitment to simply have it be exclusively professional force, and, and in many ways, kind of exclude that by strata, not by design, but by strata, it can happen that way.
It takes four years to be a paramedic.
Yeah.
And you also exclude building up your own staff for the future.
Exactly, bench strength, we heard this theme tonight.
And that's what you wanna, you wanna groom people, too.
Go ahead, Tom.
And, and again, my, 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 my point is that I, I think we, at our next meeting, we have to, you know, we, we can lay things on the line, and Margaret, if we can, we can distribute what, what the, the schedule that you and, and the chief had, if we could send it out to other towns for their, as, as, as another proposal. But with the understanding that, and, and I think Waitley's point is well-taken. Waitley is concerned that, that they wanna to make sure that opportunities are still allowed for the people. And, and I think, um, I was some, I was somewhere the other day, maybe I was on vacation, and they have something very similar, and they found that their people, um, they, they ended up with a param, some type of paramedic service, ambulance service, but their people in town, they were getting a higher, a higher rate of return, or, or calls, people responding from their houses, just going out and, and offering that, that first care. And, and, and it was, it was, I think it was up in Moltenborough, I think it was, I was, I was talking to my friend, that they were, they were getting, they were getting a better return of their people, just being able to respond.
That part of it's not going away, you know?
And, and right, and, and those are the people that we want.
And that was a big concern for Waitley?
Well, and us. Waitley's more, because for us, I mean, if, if, if you had been into any of the disasters that we have of late, you will find out who, who do we, who do we depend on? We depend on our volunteer firefighters, our, our, our call force, and our EMTs. Those are the people that are there. Not only are they there, but every one of them is I, ICS-trained.
And you had these incidents, we're on our own for how many days? And Deerfield and Waitley are dealing with their own issues, and we're, we're gonna be on our own.
So, and, and they, and they tell us that you have to be able, you have to be able to supply for at least three days. We know that. And when we had the big storm, we were here seven days. I mean, we were here, we know what, we know what it took. So I, I, I think it's, and again, it's not if we need, I mean, I don't think the question is if we need it, okay? I, I think the question is, is how do you make it? And, and we can have all kinds of projections, but until you run it, you don't really know how many calls you're gonna get. You don't know how many calls you're gonna answer, you don't know how, how else your services are gonna be, be used. You don't know how effective your call, you know, your second ambulance, getting your second ambulance crew's in. All those, those, all those are questions that you have to ask or answer in the first twelve to twenty-four months.
And, you know, I'm always disputing the fact you wanna have a paramedic level service. That is the ideal. That is the end goal, and, and I'm all for having a paramedic level service, no matter how we end up getting there. But we need to get that first responder out the door in a timely manner. And the end goal, it can be two years, three years, five years down the road, and we finally find this project come to fruition. But I think the, the main focus needs to be getting that first ambulance out the door on scene within eight to ten minutes. On scene, delivering patient care, even if at a basic level, needs, needs to happen in, in that eight to ten minutes, that's critical.
That kinda gets back to option four. I, I think maybe it would be, option, it really all comes back to option four. If that can just be kind of, if, if that can serve as a refresher for everyone, I mean, everyone knew that that was the team's recommendation early on. Take another look at option four, see what's been accomplished so far in option four, and then take a look to see what still needs to be worked on. You're gonna find out that it's staffing and location. But the goals are there. I mean, what Jim said, the response times, the, um, the continued use of on-call personnel to staff the ready reserve ambulance and to back up, and it's, it's all right there, so.
Almost think of it as the charter or the mission statement, really, of, of the, the whole process.
Yes.
That's really kinda what that, that becomes.
But you have, you have a plan, though, that, see, there is a plan for that backup ambulance. I, I think that plan is there. And, and I think, I think your plan for your primary crew was there also. It, it's just that, are you gonna hire eight people, are you gonna hire four people, or six people? And, and to get to eight people right away, I mean, that's, that's a great thing, but why do you wanna get there right away?
Well, that's, I think, I think you're right, and whatever.
But you can build up to that.
Yes.
I agree.
And only the mass will give you that time, you don't have to.
It's in the budget, too, because ALS intercepts are still in the budget.
And you, you, you go in knowing, okay, I've got a plan, but you, you really have to say yourself, you know what? Part of that plan is soft, and we know we're gonna have to make some kind of adaptations to it as we go along and start doing it.
ALS intercepts is a lot cheaper than paying a paramedic on staff.
At least during the transition, again, as it's getting.
And no one, I haven't received a single complaint that we're abusing our ALS providers, you know? No one's complaining that, you know, hey, you know, we're doing all your work. You know, so at least not on our side of the bridge.
Well, we have a meeting coming Monday, and I have, we have on that agenda IMA agreement. The outcome of tonight's discussion, you wanna send a notice to the other three boards, as well as Director Russo about our concerns expressed tonight, or just bring him forward to?
I wouldn't even say the concern, Scott. What I would say is that what, what we would like to discuss, what we would like to discuss is staffing. And, and use the four, not, because I, sometimes I learn these words that you use. And, and I would say, I, I would like to continue the discussions about staffing, but I would, and I, I would actually put down, submit to them the schedule that Margaret and Bobby have, and Chief have, and, and send, and say, look, we would like to consider,
Talk about this guy.
We would like to talk about this schedule and the advantages versus the other. And, and I, I think, you know, when Lynn, Lynn was here the other night, Monday night, and talked about the, the Western Mass Regional Library, to me, that's a home run. I mean, you, you can put both ambulances in there, you, I, I mean, there, there's a lot of advantage, and, and I think I haven't heard anyone from Waitley, Deerfield, or Sunderland complain about, or at least in our groups, they've, we've all pretty much have said the same thing. It's not a make or break where we put, put the thing, as long as it's centrally located so that we can, we can get to Margaret's house in time.
Well, that's really the key driver, is, is response time. Whatever location geographically within the region has given us the best.
And, and we know that the location over there at that intersection, one sixteen and, and five and ten, is probably the most central location for all of us.
Right.
And our response times are under ten minutes for the town.
Right.
In the town of Sunderland, two ambulance call, for the last three months I've been tracking, were under ten minutes average per month, from the time the tone drops to the time we're on scene to a remediation care.
Again, that's the goal.
A long-term goal.
Well, you wanna do it for three towns at a paramedic level. That's the goal.
Better service, I mean, that's.
So, and, and I would say that we'd like to, we'd like to discuss, I'd like to discuss the staffing. And I would like to start, you know, discuss the, the membrane of understanding. I, I, I thought we were pretty well set up on the, on the cost, the cost sharing, the way that we're gonna do that.
Yes, actually, I think everyone.
Formula for that, it's pretty straightforward.
I think we were, we were all set with that. I, and it, the, the, one other thing is I'd like to talk about is the, the makeup of the committee, the oversight committee.
Mm-huh.
You know, and I, and I think that's something, really, Deerfield has to come to, Deerfield has to come with, um, because they're probably gonna be, what, fifty-two percent of the total thing? You know, they have, they have to, they have to come and tell us what they think, because I, I would think that that has to. Well, I, and, and, and look, I know over time, um, you know, they, we have to know how they, they feel about the, the, you know, two-two-two. Is it gonna be two-two-two, is it two-two-three, whatever? That has, we, you know, we have to know.
I took the suggestion that was made last week and incorporated as a, as a markup in the draft you have before you tonight, and that's to add the fiscal age, a fiscal agent designee to the Board of Oversight as a voting member. I think it makes sense, because then that would, you know, that would change with whichever town is serving as the fiscal, as the fiscal agent. But I put that in there, and other, you know, other suggestions can come.
But can, can we, can we put together an agenda for that meeting, so that we can, we can, we can bop out?
Makeup of oversight, staffing, location, IMA.
Because it's time, it's really the nuts and bolts of time.
I'd like to make a motion that, that the chair work with Margaret to put an agenda together.
Well, I have, I have the, I mean, really, I don't know how much detail you want in the check.
Basically, get it right there.
And again, someone could do it for me, I suppose.
That's, that's, that's this Monday.
I'll second that.
See, there you go, Scott, all in favor, aye. Look at that, how we got it, Scott?
It was so, so simple, I had no idea.
It sounds so simple.
One, two, three, four.
Hosted.
Very good, thanks.
But I, I would say those, those are the main, those are the main things that we have to discuss.
That's also where we're at, in our framework. There was a framework that was developed, including some dates.
And I would just like to add five to the list, proposed date for special town meetings.
That's a good point.
Oh, okay, oh, that's a late addition.
Scott was gonna do it, because he's our financial guy.
I'd, schedule it.
Scheduling.
Schedule it. Schedule it.
It's good to have that date out there.
Here's the goal, right?
That's where we're headed.
Right, we called it, we posted it, there's the warrant, you go, oh no, now you gotta get it done?
We gotta do it.
Oh no, exactly. Chief, anything else you wanna raise, or questions, concerns? Life's good? All right, thanks so much.
He shakes his head.
No, life's good, shakes his head. Uh, with, with respect to that discussion, is there any concerns about the IMA draft in front of us?
No. No, I went through it, I don't have a problem with that, Scott.
I like the idea of the fiscal agent being added, that makes a great deal of sense. You wanna, you wanna move to have this sent out for, um, for legal review?
That should be, that should be part of the discussion, I think, next week. Legal review, the coordination of legal review.
Okay.
That'll be under IMA. Six?
Well, under IMA, legal review.
Well, that'll be under IMA, right?
Well, then we'll have to send it to the.
Okay.
Right. Uh, quickly, we have Comcast licensee board designate. Put your hands down, Tom.
What, make a motion, Dave Pierce.
Oh, right, I was gonna have to raise his hand.
He already, he already volunteered.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good, Dave. I can do that, but that's okay.
I do appreciate you, not only the interest you express, but, uh, the expertise that you actually bring to that. I think that's gonna be really, really important. So Dave's in for Comcast licensee, pretty straightforward. Uh, that one's done, IMA is done. Uh, we are in the position right now to have a second, uh, meeting with Treasury Collector candidate. Uh, an offer was extended to, uh, first choice that was recommended by the screening committee. Uh, that offer was, uh, not accepted, and our second offer, uh, was sent out to, uh, Mr. Rob Kane. Uh, sorry, our second meeting is being requested of Mr. Rob Kane, uh, and we discussed the position and his interest in that, and that's our current status with respect to Treasury Collector's, uh, role. Uh, if we could, uh, invite Mr. Kane in, uh, schedule a time, and we're meeting next week, I understand?
For the regional EMS beginning at seven o'clock.
So we could sneak in an hour before?
I, I like that.
Okay, so we get posted for six o'clock then. Okay, um, I think our next important date of course is gonna be Monday, uh, next week, now at six o'clock, and, uh, regional EMS, people who are, who are really truly interested. Those meetings are, they're interesting. You're talking about multiple towns getting together to provide, uh, what's essentially a multi-town service. Uh, in this, in this, uh, environment of regionalization, that old catchphrase seems so, so three years ago. These kinds of important nuts and bolts services being shared by communities frankly have happened for a long, long time. However, getting one off the ground, starting one up, leads for some really interesting discussion. So pay attention to those, they've been very, very fruitful and, and interesting discussions. Okay.
Well, over the years, Mr. Chair, we've discussed a lot of things that are regionalized.
Absolutely.
And this, and this seems to have hit a chord with the three towns, so.
I agree, and again, things we already share, that's why I, I put that out there. We share a lot of things, either by agreement or by, by hook or by crook, but well put. Okay, anything else on the board? Is there a motion?
Um, before we do that, can, can we put on the agenda that we can discuss a sewer connection policy in a couple of weeks?
That's in for review right now.
The Board needs to approve this, please, before next week. That way I can give the candidate, um, it's, it's.
This is the job description for, uh, the Treasury Collector.
Yes.
Uh, there are, uh, what, three changes?
Three changes.
And they include, uh, the addition of reconciling of bank statements in a monthly fashion. Uh, the question here about either by terms of employment or by actual scheduled hours?
Yeah, uh, per terms of employment, actually. Um, the Board could put scheduled hours, but the business hours may change. So I think per terms of employment will really set.
Better statement.
It makes, it makes the use of the job description in the future for whoever it is really part of the terms, as opposed to simply saying, this is dated, uh, two thousand and one, and it was eight to four back then. It may not be eight to four tomorrow, okay?
There has to be a much broader review of job descriptions, again, it's been about, oh, I think about six years, five, six years since they were reviewed, and, uh, very soon, we'll have to go back to the Personnel Committee to make some recommendations.
Motion to approve as amended.
Second. Uh, motion made and seconded to revise the job description for the Treasury Collector. Uh, it was last revised on July first, two thousand and ten. And again, these changes are, are really simple, we're adding a box full-time and regular part-time. We're talking about, uh, removing the hard copied hours of, uh, of scheduled work hours and changing that to per terms of employment, and then under supervisory, uh, supervision received, policies, directions to the Board, general supervision of the Town Administrator. Three not particularly large changes. Motion's made and seconded, all those in favor?
Can, can we, under, under supervision received, um, could we add, I'm just thinking out loud, it says, general supervision of Town Administrator under guidelines prescribed by Mass General Law?
Oh, yes, and, and guidelines, and, uh, yeah, I, I know exactly what you're saying.
That's right. 'Cause there, there are some elements that are exactly right, not necessarily supervision of us at all. There's gen- Mass General Law drives many elements of this position's tasks.
Right.
So on guidelines prescribed by Mass General Law.
Right.
Yep.
Well, cut.
Okay.
Yep. Okay, we had, there was a motion, is there a second?
Yeah.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, three to zero. Because it refers to Mass General Law further down for a couple of really specific elements.
Right.
No, that makes good sense.
Should be a general.
So sewer connection policy, we have a draft in front of us. Again, this was dated, uh, ten, seven, two thousand and ten, we'll have that for our next meeting. This amendment's in red, and I appreciate the, uh, concerns expressed by the applicant. We'll take that into consideration under both the policy as well as the application, and come back with that.
Um, Mr. Chair, on the job description, again, I'm sorry, I just bounced, but I missed something. Under direct reporting staff, since this was done last, there was a payroll clerk position. It's a very, very part-time payroll clerk position, do you wanna include that?
Is it direct report?
Yes. Uh, you know what, we can. That person can also be under my general supervision, that's fine.
Now, I'm just thinking out loud, it may not be there in the future, or may be there in the future.
It's fine, we can put it in terms of employment.
That's what I was thinking, yeah.
We can do that.
Okay. Again, that was a response.
I'm just panicking.
I understand, that was, that was actually a response to some, uh, intermittent vacancy in the position.
It was, just another vacancy that turned, yeah. That was last year.
But that's a good point, Margaret, we should raise that, uh, in the terms of employment.
Yes.
Okay. Anything else? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
No.
If a motion made and seconded, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Three to zero, if you can call us out at eight forty-two, please.